Call the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under one indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any changes to the agenda?
I do have one change to the agenda to delete item number nine C. I was hoping to have that completed to present by meeting.
Okay.
Nine C.
Okay. All right, anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of nine C?
So moved.
All right, all second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public comments. I don't see anyone on line, right? Okay, announcements. Okay, and then approval of the minutes. Consider approval of the December seventeenth twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve. I didn't see anything that needed to be changed.
I didn't see anything when I read it either. Okay, all second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public hearing, consider draft ordinance three twenty one amending title eleven, chapter five, H of city code concerning fences.
Yes, okay. So this all started back in October at the Parks Commission meeting. Staff introduced a request to incorporate these enclosures pictured here around all the portable toilets located in city parks. While determining possible locations for these new enclosures, staff did further research and these enclosures would be considered a fence under our city zoning ordinance. Although exempt from requiring a permit, they still need to meet requirements listed in city code. Such as it shall not exceed eight feet in height and fences for special purposes, which this would be considered, may be permitted in any district only by issuance of conditional use permit. So if we wanted to do these, it would require conditional use permit each and every time we wanted to build one. The Parks Commission meeting, staff recommended that a zoning ordinance amendment would be a better approach to deal with the issue as opposed to dealing conditional use permits. At the November Planning Commission meeting, it was introduced and the Planning Commission was also in favor of an ordinance amendment allowing an exception for these portable restroom enclosures to be built on city owned property for the purposes of screening portable toilets or restrooms. The Planning Commission directed staff to go back and draft an ordinance amendment. So that's what we're doing here tonight with a public hearing. Since it is part of the zoning ordinance, it does require a public hearing as part of the Minnesota state law. If the Planning Commission recommends adoption of the draft ordinance, staff will prepare the item for final consideration by the city council. Here's that draft ordinance amendment in its entirety, basically just creating that exception listed under there for A.
All right, thank you. I will open the public hearing at seven oh six P M. Anyone have comments related to this?
I don't think so.
Do I have to ask three times? Okay. As no one is in attendance from the city, I will close the public hearing at seven oh six P M. All right, our thoughts, questions, are we okay with making this recommendation?
I'm okay with making a recommendation to council.
Me as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, miscellaneous, A, twenty twenty four Planning Commission report and accomplishments.
Sorry, general business, there's one item.
Oh, sorry, general business, my bad. General business, discuss and adopt Planning Commission goals and priorities for twenty twenty five.
I just want to share. My other planning commission packet, which you probably have up as well, but just to kind of review. The goals that you formally adopted in twenty twenty four were continued review of the comprehensive plan and the both Jake and Brandon have presented high level old reviews of various chapters as done as allowed. Just continued incremental review and simplification of our zoning and subdivision ordinance. We did not get to the residential lot size requirement. Item which was a high priority and we did review and implement zoning changes and for the new cannabis law that were required. We may be coming back for an amendment already, but Brandon can explain that more. Conclusion of zoning ordinance amendments for shipping containers and detached accessory structures. Adopted continued review of tools that foster housing affordability and diversity. Didn't really do anything specific along that lines last year, provide internal education manuals for planning commission. We have some of those prepared that, you know, just reviewing what a variance is, what a conditional use permit is, things like that. We have some of that prepared but haven't presented yet. Providing education, I'm sorry, identifying continuing education opportunities for the planning commission is something that didn't exactly get to last year either. And then for twenty twenty five, we really should adapt some goals and present those to the city council. I have a couple of things here, just continued review of the comprehensive plan, continued review of the zoning and subdivision ordinances. Again, adding that minimum lot, researching our minimum lot size requirements based on industry standards and council requirements. I strongly believe that our minimum lot size requirements are too large. Review of our tower and antenna ordinance. We have the city attorney currently looking at our ordinance to see if any changes need to be made. We're currently looking at our sexually oriented use ordinance, want to make sure we're in compliance with state law as it pretends to, pretends to sexually oriented uses. The last time we did review, that was in two thousand nineteen. And just as we continue to annex property into the city, we want to make sure that we're continuing to meet state law. And continued, and if you guys have anything regarding affordable housing, like specifically things that you would like us, you know, to research, please bring them up. And then just continuing education, research both internally and externally. One thing that I forgot that I thought of after this was released is. Researching short term rental ordinance for Airbnbs and things like that. A lot of communities have those in place and we haven't ever, you know, looked into that.
Something I have towards the, it's in my review list for sure.
Okay, yeah, it's not a problem right now. I'm not aware that we have any in our community until one pops up next door to you or, you know, we don't have any, you know, a lot of.
Right.
Things that would draw people to town currently, but you never know. Do you guys have anything else that you would like to add?
In regards like the affordable housing and I don't know if this is actually a thing or not, like can we look at like, I know we want to talk about the lot sizes, but can we look at like the ratio of like the size of the house to the lot size?
Yeah, a lot of communities have, well, a lot of communities have an impervious surface required, maximum impervious surface requirement that we don't have currently.
So right now you can make your house as big as you can as long as it meets setbacks. So are you saying you want it smaller or bigger?
Well, I think of affordable housing. I don't think of like three or four story houses and if we're trying to focus on affordable housing. You know, and we're helping create developments and things like, and the builder wants to build these large homes and these small lots, get it, but if we want to draw more people that can actually afford the homes.
Sure.
How does that, is that a thing? Is that a possibility? I don't know.
I haven't seen that. I don't know if that is legal. We'd have to review with the city attorney. I think, you know, maybe with the setbacks, maybe that's all we can do. I definitely would have to repeat that with the city attorney.
I'm just curious because I think, you know, I, you know, I, people think of affordable housing as like maybe, I don't know, apartments or townhouses or things like that.
Or a small house.
Yeah, and I'm, that's what I'm kind of thinking. But I don't, I don't.
Like a tiny house?
No, like a tiny house, but an average, like.
Do we have anything in our ordinance now that allows by right, like two or three units on a lot? Or does it truly have to be a single family home then on one lot? So one unit per lot?
Yes, in our single family residential zones, we don't allow duplexes.
Okay.
Some communities do. I've had, I have seen that, I'm shocked if he does. And that was in the state legislature last year for as, by right, you could, that that would be mandated, but it didn't get through the legislature.
Right, but do you think there's enough appetite from constituents and from developers to maybe look at that? Or do you think maybe we should just let the state take the lead on something like that? I, I don't know where staff's time would be best utilized in something like this, especially with the next few years looming in front of us. I don't know.
Yeah, and so many of the things that were starting to getting introduced last year was just kind of throwing zoning, a lot of what we've done for years out the window.
Right.
Kind of removing regulations.
Right. Because I don't want to waste staff's time. I mean.
I think that's what we're here for. I think that's our job is to, if that's something that you're interested in, having us research, that's our job.
Yeah.
You know, one of the affordable housing things I've always had in the back of my mind, I'm not, you know, haven't been spending any time on it is, you know, we require in all single family residential zones that we plan for a three car garage. And even if they don't build, they have to build the two car immediately, but they have to leave space on the lot for a three car. So is that appropriate? And we don't, in our townhouse developments, you know, we, we saw a concept plan for a single stall garages. Our code doesn't allow that. The only way they can do that is through a beauty. So is that something?
I would be supportive of something like that, yeah.
Or are garage units tied to bedroom units or something like that, or a number of bedrooms?
So don't we have affordable housing in Christmas pines?
That was done through special zoning. Yeah, I don't.
I guess what's wrong with the house size of those? I already, I already think they're pretty small.
Well, they're pretty.
They're big.
Pretty compact.
Kind of big actually. The lots are really tiny. They're around forty feet wide. That was really extreme as far as lot sizes there.
And are they selling?
Slightly, there was like three permits last year pulled for Christmas pines.
Are they full? Because I know they've had a hard time selling the model home.
They're not pulled, no.
Okay.
But there are extenuating circumstances there with HOAs and other, I would say, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think that it's a forty foot lot, but they're building like thirty five foot.
Yeah, it's, right.
It's like they're filling that whole lot with a house, but I hear you for something.
Well, I'm just, yeah, if they're not selling, I just, we want to push the limits with our setbacks. I mean, Elko New Market is not a town for small homes. People come out here to get away from congested areas in the metro.
I guess what I'm saying is like the lot is like so big and then the house is this big, like there's no space.
It's up to the builders, I guess.
And they're on top, and they're on top of one another. So to me, that would be, excuse me, congested and not like.
I, yeah, I get what you're saying, but I think the biggest thing is that the builders are coming in and they want to get the most bang for their buck and the best way they're going to do that is build up.
Well, I understand that. And that's why I'm asked if this is even a thing, because I'm trying to figure out like what is reasonable.
Yeah. And maybe you, maybe you accomplish what you're trying to do through setbacks or what you're suggesting.
Right. Because I think of like, maybe this is because of my age, but like starter homes, like smaller houses and then you slowly progress up and up. I don't feel like we have a lot of starter homes or a lot of people aren't moving out of those starter homes.
Right, I was going to say new.
Because of the way things are, so how do we get people?
How do you start?
How do we attract more people to come here to be able to afford those?
I think we're going to see that happen is that the older, I'm not going to call them, let's say, call them older, let's say anything built in the last twenty five years. Those are going to end up becoming the starter homes because people are going to start moving to Boulder Heights, any of the other of these new additions that want to stay in this town.
If they can afford it, that's the thing.
Well, that's when they're selling their houses and they can afford it.
Yeah, but what about those that are mortgage locked though, which is a real thing because, you know, as we are looking to our next stage of life, right? We've been in our home now for a little over twenty years, you know, and our oldest set of children have moved out and so we have the one at home. It is, it's getting harder to justify staying here with the one child, but we're literally stuck in our mortgage. There's no way we could afford what I want in this phase of life, you know.
And I guess that's where I'm coming from too. I'm mortgage locked as well. And so I, I see there's a, there's a concern. It's not just me, it's not just you, other people as well. So how do, so I've been in my house for twenty three years.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah.
And I can't afford one of those other houses. I don't know how people even, how they would do it. You know, I look at our incomes and I'm like, how the heck are people doing this? This is not even feasible. So that's where my brain is going. Like how do we, is there a way or is there a possibility to explore, like? Explore we could do that. Not that I want to limit builders or I give our own business to make money, but how do we, how do we grow as a town if we're limited?
Who can move in?
Right. Who can afford it?
Right.
And not just stuck to like an apartment or a townhouse.
Yeah, it's so good.
I don't know, that's where my brain goes. I mean, I'm thinking probably, I don't know.
Yeah, like any, any perceived entry level housing we have, and we have a few small homes in the old New Market and they rarely turn over. And then your entry level housing is a townhouse in our, in our town and.
Yeah, maybe.
And those aren't, they're cheap either.
No.
They're not.
So how do we get builders to build homes like our old Elko New Market?
It's not going to happen.
No.
Never will happen. I mean, you, what you could do is you could have a development that, you know, people like you guys could buy your lot and contract or build your own house. That's going to, you know, that's probably the best way you're going to do it. But if you're going to have Lennar come in here, good luck trying them to have them build you a three bedroom house.
Yeah.
I just, I think the market, we, we only have so much control here, right? I think the market will dictate and.
Yeah.
There are things we can do to, we're not just sitting here with no options. Like we were at a conference last week and I heard, overheard people talking about like rough width. And like if you, you know, make that smaller, whatever, that saves money all the way down and stuff like that can trickle. So there are ways we can be creative, but as someone in the market at my age looking for like an affordable home or a starter home, like, not to speak for my whole generation, but we're kind of F'd just overall. So like, maybe I'm just being a little bit pessimistic about it, but I don't know if it's so easy as how do we get those starter homes to be built again? Because I don't know if that.
It's going to be more expensive.
I guess, I guess that's what I'm thinking, right? Because I'm thinking of.
You're, you're never going to get affordable new house, new construction.
When I was there too, there was lots of options.
So you gotta incentivize people like.
Us to move out.
Move out, because that will be the new starter home.
Right.
Yeah, and at least for me, I've accepted it is what it is. We're, we're not going to get the rates you guys got twenty years ago, the prices you got, you know, so.
You'll get them.
The expectation, expectations just may be.
You'll get the rates, just let it, let.
The rates will come down, yeah.
Yeah, you'll get the rates.
The price point maybe.
That price point, whoa. I guess I just, yeah.
I think the biggest, the biggest thing with real estate, sometimes you just got to gamble. Go with the flow of the market.
Yeah, I do, I do agree with you that there are ways we can be creative within our ordinances to help incentivize more affordability, so.
I think that would be more attractive.
Yeah, I mean, more developers are coming, they need to make more bang for their buck, obviously, right?
Question for you two, when you went to that, so Brennan and Jake and Tom went to a workshop on housing. And did you remember the number of units that were short in the Twin Cities? Housing units?
It didn't change much from last year, but it got worse.
It got a little worse.
Do you remember, was it like a hundred thousand or?
I can't say without.
I think it was more than that.
It was sixty units for sure. I don't know.
If I had a guess, I'd say twelve thousand, but that's just a total guess. I don't know if that's right or not.
I feel like it's.
I would guess like two hundred.
Yeah, I would, I think, for some reason, I think it was over a hundred thousand. Yeah.
Two and a half, I don't know, it's very short, we're very short on houses.
Yeah.
We would love to have, we would love Elko to be really creative with this and our zoning and stuff. And we want to support our city staff in doing this and we don't want people to come here and angry mobs either, you know.
I wouldn't be mindful of it, obviously, but just explore what maybe the weekend or what's in our program.
Yeah.
I don't know.
A hundred and six thousand in twenty twenty four, so I'm guessing it's a hundred and twelve thousand now probably.
And that's just in the Twin Cities.
Yeah, that's just in the Twin Cities.
Right, and we're in that weird rural space too, which we can't ignore either, so.
I think that weird rural space makes us more attractive to some people and less attractive to others, so.
This region also makes us slightly more, makes us more expensive.
It does.
I can go to Lonzo and get way cheaper.
Yeah, right.
It's harder.
If I want to, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so. I love the discussion and, you know, talking about. Housing and, and then we'll add. Short term rentals to the list.
I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
So the short term rentals would be like the Airbnb's?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have, like we don't, we are not allowing any Airbnb?
We don't regulate them, so somebody could move in next door to you and put the house up on an Airbnb, Airbnb.
Oh.
Or you could put your house on it.
Well, I'm not going to do that.
Well, another reason to do that too would be also to get the taxes generated from that as well, because we'd also have to create an ordinance. And then instead of that tax revenue going to the state, we would get it that as part of our chamber stuff, right? That was one of the biggest pushes down in Northfield for doing it was that rather than having that taxes go to the state, then we would capture that too. And I would use that as an argument for Elko because we are so spa, you know.
Our city attorney's office, I'm sure, has dealt with implementing these ordinances all over and, you know, they're Lakeville's attorney. I'm sure they have ordinance in place and they represent many cities in the metro, so. Okay. Thing else on that, if anybody want to make a motion to adopt the goals and priorities for twenty twenty five?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On David?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, onto miscellaneous, a twenty twenty four Planning Commission report and accomplishments.
Just included a memo in your packet that outlined all of the ordinance amendments that you considered in twenty twenty four and land, land use applications. So. Good work, a lot of work.
Just for clarification, what are the hours of operation for construction?
It was related to, well, contractors are only allowed to work during certain hours.
What are those hours?
Um, I have to look it up.
I don't remember.
It's seven to seven, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
And then weekends, it's nine to seven and same with holidays is nine to seven. That's what I had to find because they were not providing.
I'm going to speak for somebody that I know.
Yeah.
They're very annoyed that they're starting at like six fifty backing up vehicles with.
Yeah.
Beepers and loud construction at like, you know, six forty five on the weekends entering the day.
Whenever that happens, just have them call the police right away, for sure.
I texted.
Okay.
But the actual vehicle may be exempted, like it's the power equipment, I think, that it kind of drills on, but if they are starting early.
Definitely, they are. They're definitely.
If it was on a weekend, yeah, for sure.
Probably working late hours too.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
And anytime you suspect a situation, call the police, have them come down and talk to them?
It's the only way to do it. So people call us on Monday morning and say, oh, somebody, they're working over there and you have to call the, it's the only way. Yeah.
A year ago, I had the exact same situation where we don't have to see what's bothering the police or something, so for a list, but.
Yeah.
It's the way, the police want you to, they can't do anything. They just hear complaints and they feel like, so it's, it seems silly to me.
Yeah, you just call and say, you know, this is a non emergency, I need a. They will, if they have a priority, they'll go to the other one first, obviously, but. Yeah, if you want us to email you those hours of operation, we can certainly do that.
Sure, I'll forward them on to the other person.
Okay. They were restricted during this year and it was really initiated by construction at the Niagara site, so. But that is something, there was some, it was, and it was also contained in two separate sections of the code and there was a little bit of a conflict. So we simplified it in one section. Okay, and then there's just kind of a building permit review. There's been a standard template for several years and I just kind of plugged the new numbers in. Overall, our number, our permit numbers from twenty twenty four were very similar to twenty twenty three. We were up a bit on the single family detached units. Last year we had twenty three and this year we had, in twenty four, we had thirty nine in twenty twenty four. Permits overall, you can see this building permits total, this two thousand nineteen made a big hailstorm go through, so most of those were like re roof and re sides. So that's why there's this spike there. Twenty twenty one was just kind of one of our bigger years in recent history. We had more detached single family that year as well. But last two years, pretty similar, our single family homes, again, you can see that spike in twenty twenty one. And then by development, we just mapped them by development and most of them were down in Boulder Heights, Pete's Hill. And Ridgeview, I guess we've issued a fair number in Ridgeview now, seven. These are the different builders that were in town last year. Lennar, who started pulling permits, I think in late September, has pulled eighteen housing units, so they just build. Overall, housing starts. And we do this exercise where we call around to all the area cities and see how many housing units that they pulled. So the, these are just single family attached and detached, does not include any apartment units, but it's kind of starting at Lakeville and Lakeville was number one, I think Shakopee number two, I think Farmington was number three.
Savage seems really low.
Yeah, they just are kind of built out.
Yeah, in Northfield, they just kind of log in and go check the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what we got from the cities, so. Increase in activity in single family home permits with the city seeing effects of national home builder entering the community. We had eighteen housing units within a three month period of time. City expects an increase in permit activity for twenty twenty five, given the level of interest from multiple national builders. Permit was issued for Niagara, construction value is forty million on that building. And that's all I have on that. If you have any questions?
No, thank you. All right, miscellaneous B, twenty twenty four building permit summary.
Yeah, that was the summary.
Okay, and then skip C.
The vacant lot inventory.
And then the community development updates?
Jake has included a little memo about the twenty. Uh, Jake has a, included a little memo about the twenty forty comprehensive plan.
Yep, so we're gonna be starting the process of updating our twenty forty comp plan, turning it into our twenty fifty comp plan. Um, we're waiting for final guidance from the Met Council before we really start that process, but just wanted to give you guys a heads up that it's gonna be. A long, uh, process over the course of years and it's gonna pretty much occupy most of our department's time, so. There's gonna be some smaller projects and other stuff that we, we're gonna just have to put on the back of the paper while we work through this.
Yeah, so the Metropolitan Council, the council will be, is scheduled to adopt their policy plan statements. Other policy plans in the areas of parks, transportation, land use, sewer and water. And they are scheduled to adopt those policies, I think, in February or March. And then their staff kind of drills it down and creates guidance documents for cities on what our plans need to contain. At a minimum to comply with the Met Council policies. And they are hoping to release those to cities by October twenty twenty-five. So we'll be able to start working sometime after that. We were thinking, I mean, usually one of the first things you do is, you know, public engagement and surveys of the community and stuff like that, so. I think we had some good survey questions last time in our, our comp plan, we might consider reusing those. Um, hoping to do a little more public engagement and just getting out to public events in the community, we didn't do a lot of that last time. Um, city didn't have a staff planner for the majority of it. And then we're also hoping maybe to sp- spread some of the financial impact, cause we'll have to hire consultants to help, or Bolton and Mink. In particular, to help us through some parts of the process, if we can spread the costs over some multiple years, that might help as well.
And city growth overview?
Yeah, I don't know if you, any of you found, uh, or saw the city newsletter, but we, I just pulled out these pages from the city newsletter. That highlighted just overall growth in the city again in twenty twenty-five developments that had, residential developments that had been approved. Or even reviewed by the city, Highlands at Eagle View, Parkway Meadows, True North Development, that's Dakota Acres. Alliant Ventures, that was down in the southwest part of the city that kinda went away, Old Town Apartments, the Preserve, so. Anyway, when you look at it, um, in the list or on the map, I'm confused, have a lot going on. So, we don't need to, to talk about every one of those, I'm sure you saw them in the city newsletter as well, but. It's a good overview, and then the Scott County CDA provided a year in review, and these are kinda wins for all of the cities in Scott County. Um, and I'm just in, included that for your review. Um, again, I'm not gonna go through them, but all the. Can't remember how many cities, eight cities, ten townships are included there.
All right, thank you, and then planning commission questions and comments? I don't have anything additional.
Okay.
Sure, Niagara is probably close to starting up.
They are, we were with them most of the afternoon today, meeting, um, they will be starting to. They've been given temporary certificate of occupancy on the entire building. Um, they had a job fair over the last several days, uh, I think they filled seventeen positions, which is all that they were trying to fill at this time. Um, comments we received from, um, the leadership was that it was, uh, not as well as tended as some of their other job fairs. But the quality of the people, uh, were better than at other job fairs, so, uh, they were really happy with the results, they felt it was successful. Um, they'll be starting to do testing and like back, uh, flushing of, uh, their lines and their filters and stuff in mid-October. To early March, so they, their goal is to have what they call the first shippable pallet, which would be product ready to ship by March twenty-eighth. Not that they will necessarily be shipping them by that time, but they will be ready to ship by that time. What's that, their other testing, um, mid-February? Um, outside of Niagara, we have, um, this preliminary plat that you worked on, north of City Hall at the east end of James Parkway. Um, we expect to see a final plat application for that, the first week in February. That doesn't come back to you, it just goes straight to city council, uh, hoping, they're hoping to have that, uh, to the city council. In March sometime for final plat, so we might see that can, built out this summer. Um, we expect to get that Highlands at Eagle View that you reviewed out by the elementary school. Expect that to be coming back with a formal application sometime maybe April, May-ish.
Okay.
And then we are kicking off a little transportation study on the s- south of Boulder Heights. Um, the developers of Boulder Heights have, uh, contracted for the, on the next thirty acres to the south. That goes all the way up to the county line, our county, County Route eighty-six. And we're, have some larger just transportation issues about Beard Avenue. And how the area in general should connect to County Route eighty-six.
Okay.
So you got some pretty good movement up there right now, don't they?
What's that?
Yeah, it's a pretty good movement up in that area right now, they got a lot of construction vehicles.
On that thirty acres?
That thirty acres, yeah.
Okay, well, it's not in the city limits yet, so we'd have to go through an annexation process.
Okay.
And usually at that time, during that annexation, if, uh, for instance, if we wanna have Beard Avenue paved by the developer. Through, uh, negotiations with the township, we try to negotiate those big things before the annexation.
Okay. Opening up that one, uh, through street to Beard Avenue.
Yeah, so I expressed, we had a kickoff meeting today with, and we invited partners from, um, Rice County, Scott County. New Market Township, Webster Township, just get everybody in the same room and agree on our transportation plans, like aligning. And being on the same page, and I think I expressed, have no, uh, support. For that development without another connection into Boulder Heights, it's just, can't happen. Do you guys have anything? We're not updating cannabis at all, or?
I can just give you a short explanation, we don't here, what am I bringing back, but essentially, we have some of the, all the cultivation stuff set up for conditional use permit is required. But there becomes an issue where we have to respond to the state within thirty days and we can't get a conditional use permit done in thirty days. So, trying to avoid that, that's essentially, that's essentially.
Okay.
And also, I guess since I'm already talking, we're working on the old police department building still, we haven't had many a couple months, but we have one next week. Looking forward to hearing from the people and getting that process, keep moving along, cause I'm not sure how, where you guys are, but. We have an old police department building on, you know, that we're deciding what to do with, essentially.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Jake?
All right, anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn? All right, we have one second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, meeting adjourns seven forty-two P M.